Good evening. I'd like to call our November 16th, 2021 Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Commissioner Langson will give us her invitation this evening.
First, Valerie Hayes. Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thankful for all of your blessings. Lord, we now are blessed to live in such a wonderful county with such wonderful neighbors. And, Lord, we just thank you for all of our public slavee servants. We pray that you would provide a hedge of protection around them as they go about their jobs protecting us. And, Lord, we pray that you will give us the wisdom to make the right decisions for this county and its residents. And again, Lord, we want to thank you for all of our blessings. All these things we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Your pleasure. Join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should have had Lacy come lead us in place.
The first item on our amendment tonight are the amendments that were in all of our amendments from our regular session of November 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Would you prefer it?
I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Nancy, is there an appearance of citizens to sit?
Mr. Fuson.
Okay. We have no old business, so under new business tonight, we have the Recreation Board bylaws recommendation. The Recreation Board during its October meeting took action to allow out-of-county residents to participate in county recreation sports programs to be effective January 1st at a fee of $50, with $25 to the county and $25 to the John Magazoo Scholarship Fund. Per Recreation bylaws, Rec Board duties include initiate, plan, organize, implement, and coordinate public recreation programs and activities for Harris County, and prepare and develop rules and regulations by which recreation programs may operate. The Recreation bylaws also indicate Rec Board powers and jurisdiction to include to adopt bylaws and other rules of procedure and achieve its purpose and function with final approval by the Board of Commissioners. Because the action taken appears to fall under the powers and jurisdiction of the bylaws, action by the Board of Commissioners is needed to approve or disapprove the action. If approved, an amendment to the bylaws will be drafted to indicate that out-of-county participants are permitted to take part in rec sports and programs. If disapproved, an amendment to the bylaws will be drafted to indicate that out-of-county participants are not permitted to take part in rec sports programs. Now, we've got Mr. Fuson here this evening and Mr. Woski. We'll start. Mr. Woski, do you have any comments you'd like to share with the board or information you'd like to show the press this evening?
This was brought up by soccer at the Rec Board and this was brought up by a couple of board members of soccer association, asked if you put on the agenda. The Rec Board tossed it around for about three months and then came back, left a couple weeks ago at the October meeting to allow it with certain stipulations with communities that they were going to come back and come up with those stipulations. That's pretty much how it kind of went. Mike can tell you a little bit on the community side and the Rec Board side.
Does the board have any questions?
What are the stipulations?
Well, they were discussing how they were going to put certain stipulations on with the communities if they were going to make it into a pool. They were still discussing that part. They said they were going to come back with that aspect for the community side to how they would break up the kids if they came to sign up from out of county. If you say you lived over in Midland area, you lived in the Muskogee County area, not necessarily would you play for Waverly Hall. You possibly could be playing for Pine Mountain or Hamilton or even Mountain Hill, wherever the need would be to fill a team and things like that and those.
And that would work on that for all schools across the country.
Well, baseball does things a little bit different than sort of soccer because they're countywide, so they would just enter into their normal draft.
Well, not all baseball is countywide. Only parts of it is countywide, the older part. So you still could have somebody, it would affect them at the younger and hey.
You're correct, but there's also stipulations that Little League has to follow, and Little League International does not acknowledge our community boundaries, so therefore any kid can transfer over to certain locations. Sorry, I was just talking. So, but yes, you're correcting that.
How often do we let younger kids travel to any location?
Little League keeps up with that. I do not keep up with all that knowledge. I know that there's a few seven, eight-year-olds that do go to other communities. They tend to instead of want to play for Hamilton, they'll play for Catala or something like that. And they do, because it's also where they go to school. They won't play with some of their friends because a lot of the kids, some of Hamilton District includes some kids from Mulberry Creek, and most of the Catala area is Mulberry Creek, so some of them want to go play for Catala, and that does happen in the city. I couldn't give you actual numbers.
But most of those kids already live in the county.
Yes.
So it's a lot easier for them to travel between a community to a community with someone outside the county that might live in Columbus that has to go play at Pine Mountain, I would assume.
Yes, yes.
Stephen, what were the positives?
Some of the Rec Board members said that the positives were it stirs up more competitiveness, helps bring in a few other things, and it helps fill some other teams. Like football this past year, there were a couple of kids from Columbus that tried to sign up and a couple of kids from Trup County. It would probably help would make another team up in Pine Mountain area or something like that. It may add a few more numbers along those some of the positives. To, you know, for negatives, people look at it as taking a spot of their kid, things like that. That was also one of the things I did tell the Rec Board is if you're doing stipulations like that they were talking about doing. One that I've always seen with a lot of other counties is you don't allow kids from out of county to play All-Stars. And that way, that takes a spot for a Harris County kid playing in further advanced tournaments. Those are some of the things that I've seen.
Okay. We had the Tiger Bowl Saturday.
Yes, sir.
We had eight teams in the Tiger Bowl. How many of those were Harris County teams?
Two.
Two out of eight.
Yes.
The others came from?
River City.
River City, which is, as I understand it, that's a Pioneer?
They play at Red David.
Yeah, Red David. The one we used to call Pioneer when I was down there, Pioneer League. So that's not, that's not even a citywide league down there. It's just what they, it's the way I understand it.
They are, they do include citywide down there. With River City, they do allow kids from all over the city to sign up with them. That was a football board decision to allow River City, who had been asked to join the league, and the football board, River City asked to join the league for two years. The football board voted to allow them to join for one year with evaluations after that. That was a football board decision on that, to allow River City to integrate and play interleague. Normally, we play River City, but it's just like interleague games, like Northern and Pioneer, and we play them in baseball. Normally, it's like that. They don't count towards their standings. They don't go towards the Tiger Bowl and things like that. But this year, football voted to allow River City because River City's numbers were a little low, and that's what they did.
Well, it concerned me a little bit that we had eight teams in the, what's always been our Tiger Bowl, and only two of those were Harris County teams.
Yes.
And to your point about these restrictions or the stipulations, 35 years ago, my husband and I were following Hawthorne, Dad of Columbus, and we were following it for about a few years. And I will tell you that 35 years ago, and that's a long time ago, I did see, and he did see where, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, I'm just going to what we saw, where coaches would travel out of our district and pick up players and bring them up to play. And I know that's, a lot of them, our guys sat the bench, and that bothered us. There's nothing we could do about it at that time. I've never seen that.
And that was one of Hamilton's complaints because they're kind of way locked, that they wouldn't be able to do it. That was why they were discussing the pools where they decided to fill in spots just to fill teams. But yes, you're absolutely correct on that.
All right, that's all of me.
During the two, three-month lead-up to, was it explained to the Rec Board members that any decision they made, it would have to come to the Board of Commissioners?
Multiple times, yes, sir. I believe you were the one explaining that along with that. So, yes.
Because, you know, it has always been, back when I was chairman of the Rec Board, always been the implied from the county commissioners that this is something we did not want to do and did not want to open up a can of worms for the simple fact of what Commissioner Langson just said and other things, you know, besides just All-Stars and having our teams not play in our own championship, there were other things. I just wanted to make it clear that it was told, and I was not at the meeting where this vote happened, or I would have explained it again that night also.
It got, trust me, it got explained again.
I do have one other question. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Does it have peanut butter?
What?
Peanut butter in Muskogee County. We used to have, do you know? Do you? If they have the peanut butter, we move out. You don't think they?
I know the football board is doing All Valley this weekend. It includes other local counties to play against them in a tournament they were playing at the high school. But, and then Smith Station is doing one the first or second week of December. It keeps changing on the text again. But that, all I do is forward that stuff to the football president.
Okay. Does River City have anything like the Tiger Bowl or the peanut butter?
No.
I don't.
Not that one.
So they don't have anything where our teams would be invited to go down there and play?
And was it also explained that the recreation was different than travel?
Yes.
Is that clear? Because everything was talked about.
So how many, do we know? How many people have been turned away? There's been points to him, he was counted, but I mean, it seems like the way that this is being approached, that they turned down a lot of people, but I don't think that's right.
Well, I can tell you, the football board this past year voted to use our software system for registration, and I told them straight up that we were going by the rules that are placed by the Rec Board. We went and checked everybody, made sure everybody lived in the community that they were supposed to play in, checked verifications and along those lines. And there was one kid in, who lived in Columbus, but it turned out his mom lives in Ellersley, so he was able, allowed to play on his mom's address. There were two kids up in Trup County, but we have an area of Pine Mountain that we call our expanded zone that goes up into Trup and Merryweather County a little bit. And it's, they lived outside that zone, so they were not allowed to play. And then there were two kids that lived over in Toblerot County, and I ended up calling Rob and John Magazoo on it because it turned out that that neighborhood, the only way to access that neighborhood is through Harris County, and that neighborhood was grandfathered in as well, kind of like the expanded zone up in Pine Mountain. And so those two kids were allowed.
So really, I mean, anybody turned away?
They're just the two that found out.
And understand that the expanded zone that he is talking about happened years ago, and what happened was is we came out with the Little League boundaries, which we have to send to Widenport, which is the national. Because Trup County, Thomas County and them did not have Little League, we went into their counties, and we expanded outside of Pine Mountain, outside of Waverly Hall, into this area you were just talking about. And we expanded out of that and then sent that map to Widenport, to Little League for them to approve that it was okay that those kids that are in our expanded boundaries, even though they live outside of Harris County, are okay to be in our Little League. And the Rec Board at that time decided to adopt the same boundaries for all sports, basketball, football, all of it. So that way, if a kid was playing Little League, he could also play football, or basketball, or soccer, or whatever it was. So that's why when he said expanded boundaries, it is actually been approved by Widenport to be just outside of Pine Mountain and just outside of Waverly Hall because they didn't have Little League, and that's why we adopted that as a Rec Board, so that everything would be consistent. And at that same time, we gave the part of Harris County that is in the city limits of West Point to the city of West Point because they do do Little League. So that way, you know, their kids were not having to drive from West Point all the way to Mulcher because at that time, we didn't have to take part. And so we gave up a little bit and we expanded the boundaries. So it was kind of a give and take to help their Little League and then also help our Little League. And that's been at least 20, 20 years or more. It's been a long, probably a lot longer, a long time we did that.
And I have a copy of the note with me if y'all want to see it too.
All right, I have one other question. Again, I apologize.
You're fine.
Do we know how these other county Rec problems feel about us up in this up? I mean, they have programs that they need to fill teams too, so how do they feel about it?
I, as for Trup County, a lot of those kids already tried to play in our league. Apparently, some of the two that did not play, they apparently had played in our league in the past couple of years, is what I was able to come find out because nobody was really fully checking because the boards were supposed to be self-checking. As for what other Rec?
Wait a minute, back there. So you're saying nobody's checking?
The football board, the football boards do their verification, but they weren't really verifying everything. That's when I verified everything and was able to come and check all that stuff. When, as for other Rec departments, a lot of them allow out-of-counties participants and everything. It's not really, that's why if they get, how, a lot of, I can tell you this, a lot of Harris County kids go down there in Columbus and play, from soccer to other sports, and they're willing to take them in a lot of times. You have to pay an extra fee to play out of county. And they look at it as just more participants, more helping the programs succeed a little bit. Then there's also counties such as bylaws that allow them, that do not allow out of county. They run a program very similar to us, if it's not community-based, it's school-based, run through the Rec Department where the kids attend this school, and that's where they play for that school and things like that. So it's mixed throughout the state on how things are.
But we don't know that around our area, that we'd be cool.
I know Merryweather County does allow people out of county to play with them. I do not believe, I'm not sure if they allow them to play All-Stars or anything like that. Toblerot County, I'll tell you the truth, I don't know much about their Rec Department because they, I don't even know if they have an existing Rec Department, to be honest. Trup County does allow out of county as well. I believe you have to pay an extra fee with them. And then Muskogee County, each association allows out of county with them with certain parts, like Little League, you have to do the red form that they, has some weird number in order to play with them and things like that to be eligible for links.
Is the $50 fee, is that in addition to the normal fees?
That would be addition to the registration fee that will come to the county or in the Magazoo Scholarship Fund.
Okay. All right, that's it. I'm going to leave.
Any other questions?
None. Thank you, sir. Just one question. How are y'all doing, Stephen? In case you don't know, I serve as y'all's representative on the board for Harris County Recreation, and I'm the chairman. At the meeting where they adopted this, to send it to you guys, my daughter had pink eye, and I was unable to attend the meeting. I wholeheartedly believe, after speaking to a bunch of other members on the board, that had I been able to be at said meeting, it wouldn't have gotten to y'all's table. This got brought up in July's meeting for the first time, if I'm not mistaken. It got put on the agenda for out-of-county residents to be able to play recreational sports, which being on the Rec Board multiple times, being on Harris County's boards, coaching and everything else, growing up here, it's never been allowed. It's never been a thing. We've always kept county sports county. You know, we even say it outside of sports, is we take care of county. It's what we've always done. I was very vocal with my board from the very beginning, speaking out against it, also informing them along with Mr. Grant, that we do not have the authority to put this into place, to which I was told, and the rest of the board was told at the meeting, that it was told to them that we had the authority to make the parameters for out of county, which I doubled down on and said we did not have the authority because I helped write the bylaws that you guys signed. And clearly, in the bylaws, it says that we do not have the authority to do that. It would have to come before you, and the whole is on y'all's agenda. I personally want every kid to play, but it's not going to, it's not going to work the way that they presented it. And had I been at the meeting, I would have told them the same thing. There's absolutely zero, as my grandfather would say, meat and potatoes behind this. They presented it with a $50 fee when allowing out of county. That's Pandora's box, being completely wide open because there's no parameters, parameters to be named later. That's terrible, in my personal opinion. It's not a good look. It's not going to work that way. If you're going to put something into place, I personally feel that it has to have everything nailed down from the very beginning. That's the way I was raised, that's the way I was brought up. You have to have everything laid out, and it's not going to work with the current structure that we have. We have toyed around with multiple ideas on the board for generating more programs to get more people in, but it's not to build programs to bring out of county in. We want to bring county people back home. My daughter played softball, and the little girl she rode the bus on with pitched against us at Norton every year because she used her mom's address. I wanted to bring her back to Waverly Hall, so I built a better program. She gave me, you know, and to keep it strictly to the out-of-county thing, I personally don't think that it's any kind of help to the program whatsoever to allow out of county. I personally would love for you guys to put it in black and white so that when it comes up, as it has come up multiple times over the years, me being on the Rec Board, Waverly Hall Board, and everything else, that we can say, hey, they said no. And until said time where they come up with enough, for lack of a better term, enough ammunition behind it to give you a plan that is bulletproof, it just doesn't make any sense to me. They have known since day one that I was against it, how I felt about it, and that once again, I try to explain every meeting, that we are an advisory board. That is exactly what Harris County Recreation Board is, and we can advise things, but we don't have the power to put in place these things. That's why I wanted to come before you guys and answer any questions, or at least give my standpoint on it, so that you weren't going into it thinking that it was just all thrown together and this is what we want to do going out of.
Are there any questions, Mr. Woski?
Thank you, Mike.
Any other questions for the board or discussion?
Well, the only thing I will say is that when the bylaws were written, and I was the chairman of the Rec Board when they were written, and I was, Mike and I and Johnny Coggedaw were, and we wrote these bylaws. And at that time, we decided we were going to put in the bylaws not to allow out-of-county residents to come play recreation. And we were advised by our then attorney, John Taylor, that we didn't need to do that because it is implied by its saying it is the Harris County Recreation, Harris County Recer- recreational board. And so that is why it never went into writing. So we took that part out because the attorney at the time advised the Rec Board, we did not need to put it in writing because it was implied by the commissioners that that was not to take place, which is what I explained to the Rec Board on those months when we had this meeting, and actually had one person say, how do you know? And I said, well, I'm the one that wrote the bylaw. So, you know, just know that it's been talked about, and the county attorney advised us not to put it in there because it was implied that it would, recreation sports would be for Harris County residents. And like I said, travel ball is a completely different thing, and there are caveats through recreation and for travel ball, but there's also a fee based on if you're renting a field and stuff like that, which is within the recreation departments' purview on that.
You know, it's kind of, I mean, I'm for kids to be able to play. I want, you know, my kids to grow up playing. I played in the Penn, Laker, and I played for the club and Bulldogs back in the day. So it was one of those things to where I loved playing. I played football, baseball, I didn't play soccer until I was there, trying to play basketball and working. But anyways, going back to it, I think kids, you know, that's one thing that gets them out of the house, gets them away from electronics, gets them out, get them some fresh air. But, you know, I'm not about, it's a conversation that we, you know, had down in Savannah, you know, it's almost like, you know, pass this thing to see what's going to, you know, if there's not a plan, there's not any kind of stipulations, there's nothing there, I'm not going to vote for something if I don't know what I'm voting for. I mean, it's just that. So, you know, it's one of those things to where I would like to see what they would have to say and what kind of plan they come up with, but until then, I think it pretty much states clearly where they were, he's staying on.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I make the motion that we deny the request for out-of-county residents to play in Harris County Recreation. Now, I do see where it says, if it's disapproved, we need to draft, how that should be worded to put into the recreation bylaws. So, so I would pass that to our county clerk.
Well, I will second that motion. I mean, I sit up here and I represent the people of Harris County, and we have a lot of hard-working, tax-paying citizens, and I would honestly feel that those kids have the first chance to play in the team versus out-of-county kids, so I'm going to second that motion. Any further discussion?
And I will say, I had multiple people call me about why most of our football teams were not in our own Tiger Bowl.
Oh, yes.
So, you know, that also was a sway factor to me also.
And, you know, one more thing, you know, my daughter, I put her in, took her from others, you know, right there in Ellersley, and I brought her over to Harris County Rec for soccer, and last year was our first year, you know, her first season there, we didn't even have a coach. I mean, there wasn't even enough coaches to cover the parents. They had to alternate who could be there to be the coach. And this year, you know, we happen to have a coach, but it was, you know, I'm not understanding why they're wanting more, you know, participants, and we don't have enough coaches to cover Bullcap now. But that's my personal, what I've seen personally, and I want to be in there this as a second.
But it is fact.
It is. It is. So, but anyways.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The next item on our agenda this evening is our county manager, Mr. Randy Dally, to give us our project updates.
Mr. Chair, we're commissioners to hit the project updates quickly. Number two, we're pressing chairs in the commission meeting room. They were delivering this afternoon in every city, and I hope your mouse can help.
Thank you very much.
So that is being completed. Number four, update the Unified Development Code. Number four, update the Unified Development Code, that was rejected by the board last meeting, um, the board will have national meetings, with the first meeting being, um, on November the 30th, at 5:00 PM at the library, so the next meeting of the UDC can continue that discussion only among the board members, this is not, this is a public meeting, okay, so it will be discussed only from the board members, on which the public can, or is invited to observe, for November 30th, 5:00 PM at the library.
Will be followed with, uh, public hearing, uh, later.
Yes, or maybe subsequent meetings.
Right, right.
Then eventually a public hearing.
So we need to come to that meeting with our concerns and.
Yes.
What we want our fellow commissioners to reconsider or consider, consider.
Yes, yes, I think those were like five or six or seven major issues that need to be discussed, hone those down, and see where it goes. And Lee Walton, the consultant, will also be there to facilitate the meeting.
What day do you say we're doing that?
November 30th.
Okay, I couldn't remember what's time again?
5:00 PM, at the library. And that's been posted to the website, and on the official project page of the UDC. Now, did they say something about waiting until after the first of the year, what was that?
It comes, I guess, in the holidays.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at.
Because this has to go through the process again.
Yeah, right.
Not completely from scratch, but, but, yes.
Number nineteen, that was a part of development, uh, that part was going to develop, the gates have been installed, the dock has been installed, a lot of leisure care activities have been completed, the mainest facility, the venue will be under construction after the holidays, when the pad has been, all the pads have been, um, prepared, and we have a soft opening date of January 22nd, so that's a soft opening date of January, Saturday, January 22nd, and that's a tentative date, Jan. 70, January 22nd. Number twenty-three, phase four of the Mallower Trail, that trail is almost completed, and that ribbon-cutting ceremony will be also November 30th, at 4:00 PM, at the Calaway Country Store. And tonight, at between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock tonight, they will be testing the lot on the bridge, to hopefully work. So, again, ribbon-cutting for phase four of the Mallower Trail completion, November 30th, 4:00 PM, at the Calaway Country Store. Number twenty-four, phase five of the Mallower Trail, surveys were completed and designed as commands.
Excuse me, Randy, are you up to that? What they're doing with all the survey, looking down on Hammond Blizzing Road?
Yes.
I see all kind of pink, pink flags, and they were out there surveying today, and they're doing just to get a, an aspect of what we need to, how they need to finish to happen with the other business.
Yes, so, uh, they, they just finished surveying, like, two days ago, so now the project is under design, hopefully we can bid that project out in February, award it in March, have the contractor begin in April, and be done by this time next year, like it easily be done. And we'll be, we'll be all the way to the south side of Hamilton, and that will be a ten-mile, one-way, a ten-mile asphalt trail. And, and that's getting a long exonerating, long exonerating. Number thirty-five, construction place of building at the transfer station, that's ongoing, the workers at the transfer station are very excited about that. Number forty-four, phase one of the renovations of Cordice, that is ongoing, should be bid out next month. And number fifty-four, remove the 10,000 gallon underground additional tank, that was done on November the 8th, and we're waiting for the test results to see how that has turned, or that, how that is turning out, the sole test. So, actually, that's the quick, or the, uh, quickness of the, uh, per your work, we have, we won't have to answer any questions of working out.
What about forty-six? I'm just curious, that's the route of the HVAC system at the old library for the medical clinic, is that being completed yet, or is it still ongoing?
It's still ongoing, still ongoing, and we hope to have that completed by late of this year.
Well, I, only that's one of them, about fifty-three, it says root district of five counties, which district, do we have any idea when that might take place?
Um, in Janeburg.
I think they just, you may not, just as we were last week, they finished to know it, I think they passed it.
They finished up the state, the state, yes.
Yeah.
Get with us as soon as they're.
Yes, and that's what I, because I had tapes, man, so, yeah, we did, and then it happened last week, so, but I think it's, uh, we're getting here, it's probably.
Fans will take, fans difficult shipper to the county through the redistricting process, probably Janeburg, and that's local legislation during that session.
Any other questions?
Right, is there, uh, does anyone have any questions? Ask what you're doing.
No, I do not, unless you have any questions remain.
Now, if we have a need for executive session, so I'll make a motion for executive session, personally, well.
I'll say.
No, listen, maybe. Motion carries.
A motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? And is there any motion to adjourn?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to have a December 20th meeting?
Twenty-first.
Is it twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-first, the second meeting in the month, we're going to have that or not?
What would be on that? Yeah, I mean, we don't have anything big in the.
Nothing scheduled.
Nothing's coming up right now.
But you're going to cancel, because we'd be, they're going to do it, yeah, because we have to make, make the notice out.
I'll be honest with you, I'm okay doing either.
And I'm the same.
I mean, I don't see why we can't meet, well, but I, I'm okay with either, I know there's anybody out here, but I think we could still have a business.
There was a meeting out here.
But, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with either.
I think the January meeting is, because it may be better to do, not do the first one in January.
January meeting is January 4th. Your, your hangovers will be gone by then.
January 4th, well, yeah.
I just didn't know.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
He's got plans, I'm like, yeah. That I can't, will be able to.
But, but if there's any public hearing that's scheduled, it'll be on the 4th. First Monday is when we held our public hearings, and any kind of. And there will be one, I got the notice today to send to the paper, so there will be two fourth hearings on the 4th.
Okay.
So, December the 24th.
First.
Fourth, first.
Twenty-first.
So, are we talking about canceling, or postponing, or whatever, the 21st, or the 4th?
You can't, you can't do the 4th, because you have.
Doctor, no, we have meetings on, we have public hearings on the 4th. You can cancel the 21st.
I would like to make motion that we cancel the 21st, I don't, we'll be here for Arizona for the first time in a year and a half.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, motion to adjourn, to cancel, is it the 21st, or the second, uh, all those in favor?
Okay, got that set.
Motion carries. Now, I think last but not least, is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, before we go, last thing I said, I did get data on that new, uh, speed, uh, solar penalty that we put on my west corner road, all the issues we've had last thing, and, and I'll be looking at the data, and I'll try to get that out to y'all, but the data that's come here, that Randy and I've given, that's, that's, I'm, I'm glad we did that, I think that's going to help us tremendously in other areas I'm just out in. And I'll make a motion to, uh.
And Bo is very.
And, yes, and Mr. Barter, yeah, and I'll make a motion to go on.
Second.
Ma'am, a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries, we need to adjourn.
The chairs are very nice.